I'd call tonight's meeting to order. Tom Chapa.
Here.
Heather Delcante.
Here.
Pamela Dow.
Here.
Lisa Glidden.
Here.
James McKenzie.
Here.
Sean Amet.
Here.
Linda Sereno.
Zachary Demann.
Here.
If you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, in a moment of silence for Alfred Williams, he was a sub bus driver for the district who recently passed away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Next on the agenda is the floor to the public, and tonight no one has signed up for that. So we'll move on to the Board of Education. Item A, Board of Education Goals for the 2021-22 school year. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I just have one item about the font formatting. Just only because if we're gonna put it on the website, I don't know how we're gonna put it on the website, but it's like certain fonts are more accessible than others, and I think like so if we could maybe just change it to like Georgia or one of the other ones, it's more readable. Okay.
Definitely.
Change your way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report with Dr. Calvin.
Good evening, Board and community. Hope everybody has enjoyed their time off a little bit, and Happy New Year to everybody. So wanted to just kind of go over a couple of things. First, in terms of returning to in-person learning, we now have all of our students back, those who are able to be back, and school is moving forward for all of our children as best as we can under these circumstances. We are certainly watching the positivity rate and infection rate in the county. It's been higher, much higher than normal. I'm sure that many of you have been watching how it's been, you know, over 20% for some time, and it's kind of been up and down. So we're certainly doing everything we can to keep everybody safe. We are implementing mitigating strategies with integrity across the board. You know, more measures, we're actually considering, I just want to let the Board know, in terms of indoor activities. So for, you know, events in terms of contests, concerts, those kinds of things, because the rate is so high, what we're thinking is we may want to bring our numbers down to go back to like two per kid, and then when things get better, you know, we can kind of go back the other way. But it's just the rates are so high, and for some of these indoor activities, we're just trying to make sure we keep everybody safe. Our priority continues to be providing in-person learning wherever we possibly can and maintaining the health and safety of our students. So just wanted to share those things with the Board. Any questions on any of that at all, Board? Go ahead.
Do we just have any concept about the positivity rate vis a vis kids who are actually sick or staff who are actually sick? I know.
So it's hard to give you that data this evening. I can tell you that we have, we do have a large number of people that are working through right now in the Health Department. We have over, as of this afternoon, there are over 240 cases with students and staff that, there's 242 cases of students and 21 cases of staff members that were working through with the county. So the Health Department is seriously behind. We've heard that they're about 800 cases or more behind in trying to work through the contact tracing. So I, I'm expecting in the next couple of days, we'll know more in terms of what those percentage numbers are and what they actually look like. But they are definitely behind yesterday, the office was closed. I guess it was one of their working kind of holidays. So it was closed, and now we're just trying to catch up with numbers. So soon we'll be able to get you those numbers, but we don't really have the percentage, the total percentage as of now, basically. I can also share that today was one of our higher-than-normal days. We know that we had 22 cases, I believe, today that we've heard about. Yesterday, we had seven cases, so it wasn't as bad yesterday. And again, the Health Department, as they opened today, they're catching up a little bit. So I expect the next couple of days, we'll get numbers from what has occurred over the break, basically.
I was curious, when you say we have cases, those are positive cases?
Those are positive cases today. Yes, those are positive cases today.
For what Heather was referring to, a number of cases versus number of positive cases?
Right.
We know them.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I was, I know, for instance, that some universities have done a lot of testing, so they have a lot of cases, but the number of people who are actually like ill are very small. And so I guess I was just concerned to know, you know, do we actually have really sick staff and kids, or are they just positive? And I don't mean to, you know, be casual about that, but.
Sure. So the 22 is actual positive cases, those we know today, and the seven from yesterday, actual positive cases. Now, the 242 that we're working through is a mixture. So those are some, some people who say, hey, I'm sick, right? And then some who say, I have a symptom. So, you know, that's what we're working through, so we're not sure exactly that we're gonna, there is data. I can kind of take and disaggregate that data and share that with the Board. So after our meeting, I'll get that stuff for you all tomorrow, let you see what that looks like. And also, a lot of that, again, we're working with the Health Department to figure some of that stuff out, but that's what the number looks like right now. Okay? All right. Couple of things have happened since we last left. The Governor, the New York State Department of Health, has put out a bunch of information. I just wanted to give some updates on it. The first is the Test to Stay Program. So the Governor is recommending now that schools consider doing test-to-stay programs. There's a lot to the program. Basically, it's for students who have been exposed to a COVID case. So they have to be exposed, they have to have had that exposure in school, and they have to be, I believe it is non-symptomatic, if I remember correctly, right? So they're saying, hey, listen, instead of sending kids home and having them quarantine, test them and see if you can keep them in school. For those students, they have to take a minimum of three tests over a seven-day period, and they could take a maximum up to seven tests. So the Governor is recommending it. New York State Department of Health is saying, hey, if you'd like to do it, we think it's a good idea. However, the local school districts have, the local Departments of Health, excuse me, have to be in agreement. They also have to be able to support the programs, sustain the programs, and they have to make sure that there's equity amongst all the school districts. Everybody can actually do it. Our Department of Health, you know, we, there was an article that came out not too long ago, said, hey, we're not ready, we don't think we can do this as of yet. Since then, there's been some conversation about trying to see if schools can do it, and I think that we'll see some changes on that soon. Right now, districts are all trying to figure out how we can do this. For us, it will, there's gonna be additional staff that's gonna be needed to do it, and it will be quite a bit of work. You know, if this is what we need to do, then we'll do our very best to do it. So right now, we're working through the semantics, trying to figure out who, what, where, and how. And also, you know, we have to get tests, all the tests to be able to do it. The Governor's Office has, you know, set up a website that we can go to and get antigen tests to do it. And so we're looking and investigating all of those things, and more to be determined. We'll bring back more information at the next meeting on that. The second thing that the Governor has talked about, and also the CDC, is shorter quarantine periods for staff. What they like to see, what has been recommended, is, you know, moving from 10 to 14 days worth of quarantining down to five days for essential workers. This also does include school staff, and districts across the state are all awaiting more guidance. My understanding is that the CDC, even as of today, was re-looking at this issue. There was some guidance that they were going to add to it. Lot of questions, lot of concerns, particularly about when people get to that fifth day, is there gonna be any testing requirements? And there really was none. So lots still being worked out at the CDC's level, and once we get more information, we'll share with the Board. Third thing you should know is that over the break, the Commissioner and the Board of Regents decided that Regents exams for January are being canceled because of the pandemic that we're facing. Don't know yet what's gonna happen with the June or the August exams, but right now, it looks like definitely the January is done. My hunch is we'll probably see them all either not happening this year, or what happened last year, where people were able to take it, and if you wanted to take it, you know, you know, it was, it was up to each individual child. So we'll see kind of what, what happens with that. And then COVID test distribution. So the Governor, over the break, met with school superintendents, and basically, had a bunch of COVID rapid tests, this is what they look like. And basically, what they said is, you know, we got a lot of tests here, we want to try to get these tests out to school districts, and maybe kids can get a test before they come back to school. And so they kind of set out for this idea of, let's get a test in every kid's hands before the school year, you know, starts up in the new year, and we'll send them to all the school districts and they can hand them out. The problem is, the test didn't get to most of the BOSIs until New Year's Day. And so people were trying to get them on Monday as quickly as they could into their hands. So we do have ours. We got our, our test yesterday morning. We have arranged for a drive-through. It'll be tomorrow from 3:30 to 6 o'clock, and any parent who cannot come and pick up the exam, the exam, or excuse me, the test during those particular times, they can call their schools up until the end of the week and make an appointment at a time, and they can go to their school buildings and actually pick up the test. We're not sending these tests home with children because there's some concerns about kids opening them, putting them in their mouths, and some other concerns around that, so. But parents can come, they can grab them, and they'll be available in their school buildings if they can't come to the drive-through. Any questions on that, Board? Anybody? Yes?
How many were we allotted?
We were allotted just over 7,000 tests, and more than half of those, we are going to be giving out to students. Now, keep in mind that some of those tests, you have to use for your Test to Stay Program, so we have enough for our students to go and take two, you get two in a box, so every kid gets two on a box. And then we have some that'll be used for the Test to Stay Program. So we won't have to incur additional cost or whatever else have you. If we have a lot left over, which my, my thought is, we may have some left over, that some parents just are not gonna participate in this, then we'll look at supporting some of our, our staff. We do have a number of staff who are asking, hey, if there's leftovers, can we use them? And we would like to give those out to staff. Okay? All right. Okay, our screening testing program. So prior to our meeting, we were, Monday when we got back, there were some technical concerns online with being able to start our program. One of our schools was having some trouble, and the, the technical group that works with the testing program was sharing with us it was gonna be a couple of days before we can get up. The issue has been resolved, and so tomorrow, we start our screening testing program, we'll be over at our, at Leighton and District Office, and then we'll be trying to move around the entire district. So we're up and rolling, and screening testing will be going tomorrow. Okay? All right. And then the last thing I wanted to share with the Board is, we've had some concerns that have been brought to our attention from the county. As, when I say "we," this is really all school districts in the county, have been told that the county no want, no longer wants to support school districts with respect to voting machines. They've shared that, you know, there's, there's just too much works with the ballots and trying to confirm the machines, and, long story short, they basically have said to all school district, districts, excuse me, that what they want us to do is purchase our own machines and get your own ballots. Now, we've always gotten our ballots, but the machines is the real issue. And so there has been a county bid through our BOSIs to see what that might cost us. At the end of the day, what it costs us to get all the machines for all of our sites is about $42,100 before aid. Because it's going through BOSIs, there's a 78, almost an 80% reimbursement rate there, so the total cost for our district is $9,178. There are some soft costs involved. Over the years, we have to make sure people are trained when they're working with these machines, that we have all the supplies that are needed. Annual, you know, ballot printing is around 2,000, and, and the soft cost and the annual ballots are not aidable, but that, those are what the costs are. You know, certainly, just so you know, we have all kind of tried to see in our own ways, is there a way that we don't have to go buy our own machines? We've talked with the county and tried to talk with the, you know, the Elections Group, and at the end of the day, they're saying you need to get your own machines, or else you need to go to hand counting, regular hand ballots, which could cause some trouble or some challenges, you know, when you go to do an election. So we're recommending that we go ahead and just purchase those machines, but before doing that, I wanted to bring it to your attention and make sure that everyone was okay before we move forward. Yes?
Mathis, in other counties you've worked in, have, have you ever had the Board of Elections and of the county say they're not gonna support school elections?
I have never seen that. I've never seen that, ever. No, I've always had, you know, counties, you know, they give us machines, they let us borrow their machines, they come in and help us in any way possible. So this is definitely.
What is the rationale?
So again, what we've heard, and Nancy, you can certainly help me out, but what we've heard is, there was concerns around the ballots, the ballots are changing consistently, and their machines didn't go with some of the newer ballots, the lack of some of the staffing, and then the upgrades of the machines, and then moving things to this building, that building, and it was causing a lot of challenges for the County Board of Elections. And so they kind of just went out and said to all the school districts, we just can't continue this, I'm saying it. Nancy, you wanna add anything on that?
Only that we have been working on this problem since June, and we've been, and not only us, but other, other school districts have gone to Will Barkley and to, to our other legislatures, and they say, if they really can't help, they can suggest that the county allow us to use the machines, but they can't force them to do that through the Board of Elections. We've reached out to the Board of Elections, we've reached out, Dr. Calvin reached out to the County Legislature, and really, there's nothing that we can do at this point. So we're in between a rock and a hard place.
I've actually spoken with the County Administrator on this issue, and I know that he was trying to do everything that he could to try to see if this could be turned around, but at the end of the day, all the, all the districts all heard the same message, they, they want us all to get our own machines, basically.
I find that very, very infuriating. I'm just gonna state that publicly. As someone who worked on the Government and Courts Committee and worked directly with the Board of Elections, I just find that to be, I don't know, very frustrating.
Yeah, well, I would agree with you.
We are a shared tax base in this county.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I would just say, I do agree, very much so. Any other, Tom?
I just had a question. How many machines would that be? With the four locations, correct?
We would be getting four mach, uh, five machines. So right now, what we would get from the county is four machines and a spare, and we would be doing the same thing in a regular elections, having four machines and a spare if one of them were to break down.
Okay, so each of the machines is approximate, that's the total cost for all the machines?
Yes. That would be for all five.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Board?
I, I mean, I guess I would just say, I know Pam also works the elections, so she's familiar with this end of it, too, but we are also gonna need someone to set up the machines, to program them, to make sure they're running right. You gotta run a pre-audit, you gotta run the post-audit, you have to, someone who knows the, I mean, like, we get trained every single year on the machines. And there needs to be like, I mean, it's, it's a heavy lift.
Yeah, it is. We, we agree.
Yeah, it's not just popping a machine in.
Right.
It's expensive.
Totally agree. As you can see up there, we put in soft costs, and there were some training costs and things that was a part of that, so yeah, yes, excuse me, we agree. Again, I can say, to answer your question again, no, I've never seen anything like that before. Never have, never heard of such a thing. I mean, we always just work together at other counties I've worked at, but for whatever reason, you know, and I, and I, we are in partnership with our counties, I want to be respectful, but for whatever reason, they have selected to, this is the pathway that they've selected to do for all of the school districts, and I will tell you that my colleagues are just as frustrated and have spoken pretty loudly on this issue, and including our district superintendent, I know he's worked hard on this issue, too. So at this point, you know, our DS has worked with us through BOSIs to at least get it aided if we had to all get our own machines and got a big bid for us all, but at the same time, it's a cost that we haven't had to do before. So, yes, and work, a lot more, so, yeah. Okay. Okay, Board, so just wanted to share that with you before we, we went down that pathway. Any, everybody okay? Okay, make sure. All right, any questions from the Board? Okay. All right, well then, thank you. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, Items A through F. If I could have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next is Personnel with Dr. Sweeney.
Good evening. In my section, we have our professional staff recommendations, and those are Items A through G, ending with the extra comp recommendations.
Items A through G, excuse me, could I have a motion?
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
And then our Support Staff Recommendations are Items H through K. Yep, and then I'll do L separately.
Items H through K, could I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
And then L, we brought this a few months ago, or a little while ago, it's our sub and temporary position rates for the 21-22 school year. We did make an amendment for an increase for the sub-driver wage, that will be effective tomorrow if it's approved tonight, and that's the only change in the rate schedule.
Item L, could I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Actually, I'm sorry, Karen, I just have one quick question. I just realized that the substitute teachers aren't, aren't here, that's a separate.
Yes, they actually fall.
Okay.
Yeah, they have a separate contract under Okta 2, so their subrates are different. These are our hourly and other subrates, like lifeguards, things that we set outside of a bargaining unit.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is Finance with Nancy Squires.
A is a donation from Donors Choose to Kingsford Park School. B is an agreement with Oswego County for COVID testing. And C is a budget amendment for insurance proceeds that we received on three claims.
Items A through C, could I have a motion?
Move them.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, I had asked Mathis before, with the COVID testing, the money that we're getting there, we will be able to allocate that for our Test to Stay Program, some of it, to utilize there.
So the, what, the main pieces that we put in here was for the staffing. If you recall, we, we got some staff that we hired, and that, they'll be able to be utilized for that, as well as for the screening testing that we're doing right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next is the Student Representative Discussion.
All right, I just wanted to say Happy New Year to you guys. And, yeah, to be honest, I don't have much to talk about, but that's, I thought I'd bring a couple of things. The first thing was, just getting back to school is a good move, and I'm glad that we got to shift back and give the people who needed a break a lot of rest, so we can cover some of those staffing shortages and get back to filling in all those positions. Because I know there was a lot of shortages with bus drivers and, and teachers needing a lot of substitutes, so I'm glad that they got that break, and then to get back into some interest in learning, and I think it's gonna get a little smoother to revert back. And the second thing was, I want to talk about the National Honor Society. They had a, a collection of toiletry items throughout December for human concerns, and I thought that was really nice and important, and they have, they've been doing this for about five years now, and this year, we've collected 300 items, and I thought that was very impressive, wanted to bring that up. And then, lastly, just wanted to talk about the rise in COVID cases. I know that's, that's big, especially for schooling and transitioning online and sports. So I just wanted to say, if anyone needed any information for vaccinations, they could, they can contact the Oswego Health Department, there's Walgreens, Wayne Drugs, Kenny's, or Walmart. And I just hope everyone stays safe and know that they're thinking to help you. That's everything.
Next on the agenda is Items from the Board.
Go for it, Pam.
Happy New Year to all. Welcome back to our administrators, faculty, staff.
Welcome back to our administrators, faculty, staff, students. We're all gonna do everything we can to stay in person, but we need everyone's health with it. I support Zach. Vaccinations, it's gonna help us keep going and keep in person. So other than that, let's look forward to a better year in 2022. Hopefully, we can get through this current wave and with tests and vaccines and everything out there, hand washing, social distancing, everything that we've been doing, we all need to continue to do. And hopefully, we'll get beyond this wave and can look at things like we did at the end of June last year. So everybody cross our fingers.
Any other items?
I just want to say, Zach, take back to National Honor Society, I work with human concerns. They, they serve this district. And I know toiletry items are, you know, something that they really need donated, so the, it's, it's a big deal. And so the effort that the NHS put forth is so appreciated, and thank you for representing our school in that way. And I know Sean had brought up things that the athletic clubs did as well to really contribute to our community before Christmas. And so all of that's really appreciated.
Any other items? Next on the agenda is the executive session, that the Board moved to executive session for the purpose to discuss the work performance of a particular person. Could I have a motion?
And also a matter that could imperil the health and safety of, of the community as well, thank you.
Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And would you need a vote after executive session? Okay, you may move to executive session.